I'd like to welcome you to the July meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education. It appears that all of our members are present with the exception of Ken Willard. So we have nine members present today. Ken Willard is not here. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development, according to each student's gifts and talents. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business today is to approve the agenda for our meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda? Moved by Janet Wass, seconded by Kathy Bush. All in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero vote. Thank you. Then we need to approve the minutes of the June meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Deana Horst, seconded by Sally Cobble. Is there a discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. And then we have minutes from a special meeting on June 25th. I would like a motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Carolyn Campbell, seconded by Jim McNeese. Thank you. Discussion? Then all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. That was a nine zero vote. Okay, we'll begin our meeting with the Commissioners. We report Brad.
Well, good morning, everybody. I hope you enjoyed the rains and the storms last night. We can always use the water. Other than I had four inches in my gauge this morning, so it might have been a little more than we needed all at once. But the first thing you're receiving, I thought I'd give you an update on where we stand on our waiver as a state. There's multiple amendments that we have going on in our waiver. The first one was the Board's decision to have CETE develop our state assessment. That's the first item that you see on there in bold. Our agency, working with CETE, has submitted all the requirements. They did that last spring. They have a few technical questions, but I think as a state, we're sitting in really good shape right now. Not only do I believe that it will get approved by the U.S. Department of Ed with our experience that we had this spring, a lot of the successes, the amount of test items that were completed at a good quality level, and you'll hear more about that at our 11 o'clock report. But just the details that CETE out of KU is placing on the development of that assessment, I think Kansas is going to be very pleased with the future of our assessment tool. And I'm pretty confident that that will get approved by the U.S. Department of Ed. One thing that could play a role in that, and I'll be at the summer CCSSO conference later this week. I actually leave after the board meeting tomorrow. But several states have been very interested in the fact that two consortiums, Park and Smarter Balanced, were awarded a federal grant to develop a test. And by that, really what they did was they developed a bunch of questions that pooled together would be a test. It is our belief that those test questions, and I know this is very simple, but I don't want to get too detailed. But for the example, at third grade, if there was a question that was aligned to the third grade math standard of being able to do double-digit multiplication, they would develop a pool of questions that would measure whether or not a kid could do that. It's our belief that we ought to have access to those questions. Not the, we don't want the test. But we believe that through that grant, there were thousands of questions that were written, that were piloted, that were researched, that would measure certain grade-level standards. Kentucky, the Commissioner of Kentucky has submitted a letter to the U.S. Department of Ed basically saying, when can we expect to have access to those questions? So we might want to be able to pick and say, well, we like that one. We like that one, you know? So instead of CETE having to write them all, there could be a pool of questions that they could also look and say, that meets our needs. Right now, our understanding was we only have access to those if we want to pay for them. We don't believe that that was the intent of the grant in the beginning. So that'll be a conversation this week at the summer conference. And along with, if those questions are available to states that are developing their own test, then that would even give our future assessments even more of a pool of questions that we could draw from, which would even enhance Kansas's assessment. But overall, we do feel very good about U.S. Department of Ed approving CETE, developing the future assessments for Kansas. The next item, if the Board recalls that the model that we chose for Kansas that was presented to the Board last fall from the College and Career Ready Assessment Advisory Council, was that at the high school level, we accept multiple assessments. And you can kind of see the little diagram down there as just kind of a reminder. We termed it as the bouquet. That once a kid gets in high school, based on that individual's career plan of study or their individual plan of study, there would be a state assessment available created by CETE. But if the kid has already taken something like the SAT or the ACT and had scored a college-ready mark on there, then they wouldn't have to also take the state assessment. We aligned it to what the individual's plan of study might be. We are also still in the process of developing what we call the CPAS, those career pathway assessments. So there will eventually be an assessment in automotive mechanics that has a high rigorous college or post-secondary readiness score on it. If the kid is going that career pathway and has taken that assessment and had met that college-ready mark, would they have to take also the ACT or the state assessment? Well, now it's based on what the kid wants to do. So we have submitted that. We are still getting some pushback from the U.S. Department of Ed. Because I believe, well, until this weekend, we believed we were the only state that was submitting a proposal that used more than one assessment to measure a level of college and career readiness. We have since learned, and I don't know enough about it because I just read it Monday or yesterday or Sunday, that Massachusetts is also looking at the possibility of school districts choosing which assessment they believe. Now, they're using Park, and they're also creating a state assessment. So they're looking at giving school districts some choice. So we'll see how that goes. But I know more and more states are looking at, especially at that high school level, trying to align that final assessment to more meaningful to the student. It's not quite as, I don't want to say robust or as large scale as ours, but we are getting a little pushback, but we are still working with U.S. Department of Ed on that one. If you turn over teacher leader evaluations, you'll be getting an update on that topic tomorrow morning. Again, this is the piece of Kansas's waiver that landed us as a high-risk designation. We have still held to our stance that we don't believe one test ought to be a certain percent of any teacher's evaluation. We approached it that we believe there are multiple ways, multiple valid ways, that teachers and principals and leaders can demonstrate that students are growing in performance. And we didn't put a percent on it. We said significant was meant that if you can show in more than one way that has a significant impact. If you cannot demonstrate at all, looking at two, three different measures, that would even have a significant impact. So U.S. Department of Ed has finally really come to agreement that they believe that the rules we put in place far outweigh any kind of a percentage. So they've kind of come around on that. You know, I talked to them two weeks ago. I said, you know, both teams are at the ballpark. It's mode. The lines are chalked. We're ready to play ball. And I think now we're arguing about how much ice is in the cooler in the dugout. And it's, you know, so it's just little detailed things. But I think we're making progress on that one. One thing to note on that, and I might have it, I'm not reading this word for word, but the last thing is all states that have waivers, that have been working with waivers for the last two to three years, they all expire June 30th. So as of today, all states, their waivers are expired because they were only good for two years. It was never the intention that waivers would be permanent or long-term. It was just to help states move forward until Congress reauthorized ESEA, which was supposed to be done in 2007. While we're seven years later and it's still not reauthorized, so what, U.S. Department of Ed said, if states want to extend their waiver another year, submit your plan that you want to. And we've done that. So we will be hopefully getting our waiver extended for the 1415 school year. One thing the U.S. Department of Ed did was they somewhat separated, there are three principles in the waiver. Principle one was about your college and career-ready standards, and do you have a plan on how to assess those? Principle two was about the AMOs. What is the accountability portion? And of course, Kansas submitted the four AMOs and how we plan to provide supports to priority and focus schools. Really no questions about those. Principle three was all about the teacher leader evaluation. So what they're doing is they're telling states, if you want to extend your waiver for another year, tell us what you're doing with Principle one and two, but keep working on the teacher leader evaluation component. They're giving states more time to do that. So anyway, that's just kind of a quick update on where we're at. We hope to hear in the next month or so. But right now, I would say probably the biggest challenge we're having right now with the U.S. Department of Ed is around the whole bouquet concept because it is unique. It is, you know, if a kid has scored a 28 or a 30 on the ACT, should they have to take the SAT or should they have to take the state assessment? Well, now it's a conversation between the counselor, the kid, and the parent, depending on where the kid wants to go. So anyway, we're still working through. And that will be a lot of the conversation at CCSSO later this week. Any questions on the waiver?
Thank you, Brad. That was a great report. Last week, I was in Washington, D.C. for the ECS conference. And it's getting around about our multiple accountability because I had several states coming up and asking me more about it. And so we may be having more than just Massachusetts look at us on that. And I'm glad you're going to that summer CCSSO meeting. My question isn't really anything about us. It's what are those states that are still on No Child Left Behind? Are they still on the same standards? And are they at 100%?
No.
And how many of them are there?
Comment first on the other states looking at this. Last month, I was in Denver at the Rural Chief State Conference, and I presented to them what our model was. And Kentucky, several of them were like, we're really interested in what you're looking at with that. So I think there's a lot of interest, mainly at the high school level, of trying to gear it more towards the student. For the states that don't have a waiver, they're moving in the same direction Kansas and other states are. They're adopting college and career-ready standards. They're looking at assessments that are aligned to them, that are more robust, that are not just multiple choice. It has enhanced items that get to a deeper level of whether or not a kid truly has the concept or anything. So they're also working on teacher leader evaluations. The thing that they're dealing with is the old AYP targets of that. Remember, in 2014, which was this year, you had to have 100% of your schools.
So are they just ignoring that?
Well, if you're not, then they just tell you you're on improvement and tell us what your plan is. But they're not doing anything really different around raising standards and looking at new assessments and teacher leader evaluation. So they're just, it's more the accountability piece. Just a couple, unless there were...
Other questions? Okay.
Just a couple of other things. We do have meetings started scheduled next week with post-secondary. We're also bringing in some superintendents, some internal staff to continue the conversation of how we can start looking at some K-12 through higher ed goals. We have a lot of data and information that we can focus on about, you know, really getting serious about what percent of our kids are entering post-secondary, what percent need remediation, what percent of our kids are completing their first year, and trying to come to some common goals on what can we do, K-12, and what can higher ed do to maybe close some gaps with post-secondary success, completion, entrance, looking at where we have more needs in the workforce. So we're starting, actually have a meeting next, I believe, Tuesday with Andy and a couple of superintendents to really see how serious we are about looking at that. The last thing I had, just to update you on, we've had safe and prepared schools in Kansas. You remember a few times Bob Hall had come and presented to the state board, well, he's no longer in Kansas. The funding for those initiatives is running out. So our staff with the adjunct general's office, along with Kansas Highway Patrol, have met a couple of times over the summer with the governor's office, his staff, to try and put together a proposal of how we can move forward with a plan. Most likely, that position would be housed here in the agency. Just trying to put a plan together. There's a lot of need and a lot of work left around helping schools develop good crisis management and intervention plans. And we don't want that to slip. So they've been meeting a couple of times over the summer. They will be submitting a proposal to the governor's office, hopefully for this next legislative session. Once it's there, they're working on it. I'll try to keep you updated on what that looks like. But this agency will prob, Bob Hall didn't work in our agency. But since he's left, it made sense to the group that the first-place school districts are going to call is the State Department. So we will most likely house that position and that staff if our proposal gets approved here. But we will continue to work with, for example, Highway Patrol. They do a lot of training around active shooters. They work with schools of what do you do if someone's on your grounds or, you know? And so anyway, everything from tornado drills to chemicals, all of those, what do you do in a crisis? So I'll keep you updated on that. That's all I have.
Questions for Brad? Well, Brad, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on the waiver and for keeping us informed. I think that the issues that are kind of sticking points for us are important issues that we need to continue promoting our philosophy because it does relate to our commitment to students and doing what's best for our kids. Well, we're a little early for our Citizens Open Forum. I see we do have one speaker. So I would like to now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:25 a.m. The state board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the state board. The state board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The state board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification.
Catherine Johnson, I'm an attorney with the Display Rights Center of Kansas. And it's my pleasure to be here with you this morning to talk about the ESI regulation. Nearly 17 months ago, this board considered the then-proposed regulation on ESI issues in schools. The board spoke at great length about the need for further review after the local level's decision on a parent or student's complaint. I've attached to my testimony different segments from that hearing on the board's concerns and requests that staff from KSE bring back to the board in the near-future language to consider amending the ESI regulation to include an appeal process. DRC has worked very diligently to advance this board's request. We have partnered with a previous commissioner's legal counsel and drafted some language that we feel is a reasonable approach to what the board has requested nearly a year and a half ago. I've attached that language to my testimony for your review. And I'd like to take a few minutes to go through it with you. But first, I want to make a request of the board that after you have a chance to review this, if you feel this is a well-reasoned approach to this appeal process, that you direct SEAC in their July meeting to consider this language. Again, this is a compromise approach that was worked out with the commissioner's former legal counsel in DRC. And request SEAC review that specific language and bring back its recommendation on this language to you during the September meeting. The dispute resolution process that we have envisioned works to ensure that parents have the ability to have an independent review of their complaint. Parents right now are very reluctant to file any kind of complaint with the district because there is no further review of what the district will do with that decision. You need to understand that parents, by the time they get to this point, have had a lengthy, protected battle with the district on not using exclusion restraint or not doing other things with their student. And parents do not have any trust that a district is going to, in an unbiased way, consider their complaint. And so they are seeking further review. They will file with the local level if there exists a chance for an independent party to consider what the district has done. This process would start with the local level. Parents would be required to file a complaint with the local level, give them a chance to resolve that complaint satisfactorily. If a parent is not satisfied with that, they then would have the If a parent is not satisfied with that, they then would have the ability to file with KSD a complaint. That complaint would not be considered an appeal of the local level decision. This is important because any appeal does not allow a parent or a student to supplement the record below. So this would allow the parent to do that. When KSD would receive the complaint, the amendment would require KSD to review the local level decision, the process, the parent or student's complaint would require the KSD staff speak with the parent or the student, or both, if that would be appropriate, speak with the school, see if there's a way to resolve this complaint short of going forward to a full investigation. We have a mediation process in place right now that works very well. But if that is not an option, then KSD would conduct a full investigation. They would write up a report when they were done with that, and if corrective action is required, the new amendment would authorize KSD to order sanctions if the district refused to comply with that corrective action. As I said earlier, this is, we believe, a reasoned approach. It would give the parents and the students an impartial review. We do not believe it would create a unfair or unfended mandate for KSD staff. This is a process that I believe KSD staff already use pretty regularly when they receive complaints from parents. The main difference is this would ensure the right to file an independent complaint exists for all students and parents, not just those that know how to contact KSDE. Since the regulations were implemented in April of 2013, my office continues to receive complaints about the use of exclusion restraint. Common complaints still exist about no notice or seclusion wasn't happening. I see my time is up, but I would just like to take a second to ask you to look at Tammy Chanley's testimony that I submitted. This is a parent who had a seclusion issue that the district refused to acknowledge was being seclusion, and she's requesting that you take our requests seriously and continue to amend the ESI regulation. Thank you. I would stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Did we have any other speakers? Okay. The state board's citizen open forum is closed at 10:32 a.m. We would like to thank our speaker for sharing her views with the board. The state board will determine if this issue should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. Thank you. Well, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. That's very unusual. I see that Mary Ann did just come in. I don't know if she's had time to gather her presentation together or not. Are you ready?
Sure, who's first?
Okay. Well, then, I would like to introduce Scott Smith, who... or Brad, were you going to introduce him?
You're doing great.
Okay. Scott, we'll turn it over to you and Mary Ann Perry. They're going to talk about state assessments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you may recall, we were here last month in June with a received item, provided you with some materials that you would need. We hope we'll need a motion today. We're going to make an official recommendation. So we will review some of that, have quite a bit of information to cover today. And so you have, I think everyone now, the PowerPoint that I'm going to go through. I'll go through a few slides and then turn it over to Dr. Perry. So in thinking about an update, what we'll talk about today, some accomplishments of the transitional assessment this year in 2014, a recommendation for reporting scores in 2014. Dr. Perry will talk about some sample reports, which will also talk about a preview of next year. So in thinking about, we've been here several months now talking about various events that have happened during this assessment season. So what I thought I would do is sort of recap what we have accomplished in 2014. Just going down here, this bulleted list. We've assessed students on the Kansas College Career Ready Standards in Math and English Language Arts. We assess students on the Kansas Interactive Test Engine, otherwise known as KITE, the acronym, one year in advance of 2015. We introduced students and teachers to new technology-enhanced assessment items with focus on how to make those technology-enhanced items accessible for students with disabilities. We provided districts opportunity to troubleshoot the new KITE engine, which was an involved process. They also troubleshooted their local servers, student-level devices, which we'll talk more about later, and then also various web browsers, one year in advance of 2015, when the assessments count. We field tested iPads, Chromebooks, Macs, and PCs. We tested the response time and capacity of the KSDE and CET help desk resources. And some more accomplishments. We tried out new assessment tools and accommodations not available with the old test engine. If you recall, I've talked about the test engine that we used for a decade, essentially was able to push out essentially multiple choice, facsimile, a PDF of a multiple choice assessment. It had very little functionality compared to the one that we field tested this year. Generated item-level data, needed to finalize the operational test forms for 2015, and Dr. Perry will talk a little bit more about that. CETE identified and mapped peak testing times. We identified the need to revise a formative assessment policy. I think we've mentioned earlier that we realized that there were a great number of teachers who were occupying, for lack of a better word, the portal after the testing window had begun, using that portal for formative assessments, prior to when I think we, as best practice would dictate, would like for them to be using. It just, it took up time and space. So we will be taking this issue to the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council to look at what our formative assessment policy should be. Should we eliminate that option for schools, in short? Should we say that at a certain point, your formative assessments should be done, say, in the fall, and then once the assessment window starts, this is now when you should be thinking about the actual assessments? I'm not necessarily leaning in that direction, but it's a conversation I think we have to have. CETE received positive feedback on the new automated voice. The former voice was the David voice, which I think was a little clunky and not everyone's favorite. Heather, our new automated voice is a real success story. She's a heck of a good cook, too, I hear, so. Horrible joke. And that's used for the audio accommodation. CETE received positive feedback from districts on the new KITE user interface. In other words, how easily, how easy is it to manipulate this new tool, especially given that the other was very familiar with teachers? I mean, we used that for a decade. So now for what we've been talking about the last couple of months. The vast majority of goals reached with all of these accomplishments. The transitional assessment met all of the goals except one, to provide early assessment results to students and teachers, students, teachers, and parents to indicate areas of strengths and weaknesses relative to Kansas College Career Ready Standards. Because of the distributed denial-of-service attack, which we have discussed at length, this frustrated the efforts to accomplish this. So as I said, we are here today with a recommendation on releasing test results and suggestion for an alternative approach to meeting the spirit of the assessment goal. So just last month, you may recall, and so this is what, there's material behind our recommendation, just to review what we, what you were in receipt of last month. It was a letter from the Kansas Technical Advisory Council recommending against releasing student, building, or district-level data. There was a letter from the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council recommending against releasing student, building, district, or state-level data. And remember, if you recall, the Kansas Technical Advisory Council is comprised of, I'll say, national, even international experts. The Kansas Assessment Advisory Council is comprised of local superintendents, assistant superintendents, test coordinators, and every other central office folks. And we also came here with concerns from CETE about reliability, validity, and fairness. And we also explained our, there was an explanation from CETE on the implications of the broader implications of the distributed denial-of-service attack. So here it is, an official recommendation, which I will restate at the end after Dr. Perry talks about some alternative, I shouldn't say alternative, some reporting ideas that we're also going to be proposing for this year. We are recommending that no individual assessment data be reported to the Kansas State Department of Education or districts. By that, I mean it would not be calculated, leave KU, and arrive here. We would not be in possession of it. Be no building-level assessment data be reported to the KSDE or districts. No district-level assessment data be reported to the KSDE or districts, and no state-level scores or performance categories be reported to the KSDE. And this sounds fairly extensive and fairly categorical, but what we want to do is talk about what we can do this year, which we think that there's a great deal of value in that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Perry.
Thanks, and good morning. Before I start talking about the reports, I do want to make one thing clear, because KSD has been very kind to us. Actually, the whole state has been very kind and forgiving of CETE. But I have been hearing in the media and social media that people are concerned that CETE is hiding behind the DDoS and using that as an excuse. So I want to be very, very clear. We recognize at CETE that KITE was not where it needed to be when we started testing this year. We had mistakes that were totally on us. We take responsibility for them. We are making the improvements, and we intend to be ready to go next spring, hopefully with no issues. But the DDoS was huge. It hurt us, but some of this was on us as well, and I want to make that really clear. And because of that, we've been really working with our content folks at CETE to say, what can we give back to teachers and schools? Because they worked really hard through a lot of tough times. So this is a, this really teeny-tiny report, is what we put together, and I'll show it to you in a little bit more detail. But what we want to do is, instead of providing state-level scores, is actually try to give some feedback to teachers, parents, students about strengths and weaknesses in each grade and subject. And with that, release some exemplar items and explain how the item fits into the standards and what we can learn about a bigger area around that item. So as an example, this would be, this is the top of that teeny-tiny little page, it was on the previous page. So this is, and this is real, this is grade 11 ELA. This is the first analysis we did. So what we're picturing is a report that starts out, so I've crunched a couple of things together for the sake of space, but we would start out by explaining to parents, what kind of items did your kids take this year? What is this about the new standards, assessing the targets? What does that mean? So in grade 11, kids took multiple-choice items with one answer, multiple-select multiple-choice, where they would have to choose more than one answer. This is very typical in ELA, when you have to select two pieces of evidence that support a claim. And they took these technology-enhanced items that require students to interact with the item by moving an object or selecting from a dropdown. But one thing we found is we were worried that technology-enhanced items would be way difficult for the students compared to other kinds of items, and they weren't. They're slightly more difficult, but it's actually all within a realm of standard errors. So we were surprised, but kids did very well on technology-enhanced items. In 2014, kids only took writing through machine scoreable items. So this year, they did not have a writing prompt, and at this point, the writing claims are easier than the, the writing items are easier than the reading items. And we will explain in the parent report that next year, the kids will have a writing prompt that will require them to write an essay. We also found there were no differences in how kids responded to ELA items linked to informational passages versus literary passages. And that's exciting, because in the past, we found kids do better on literary or fictional texts than they do on the informational. That seems to be evening out. The one area we did find in 11th grade is kids are struggling with items associated with poetry. Okay? So that's information we want to give back to the teachers, that this is an area for improvement for our kids, is being able to analyze poetry. So here's an example of an item we're releasing as of right now, released. So this is actually an example of a writing item that is done through a machine scoreable item. So this is about an argumentative paragraph. So if you start with the word that says curfew and read that, that's a writing passage. I'm going to shut up for just a second so you can read it. And what the sentence is, or what the question is asking for is come up with the last sentence that would make the most sense to add to this passage, to come up with a conclusion to the argument that this author is making. Okay? So what we found is that about half of our students could answer this item correctly. And we're going to give information about, so this is from Claim 2, Target 6, which is write and revise brief argumentative text. Obviously, they're not writing, but being able to have to put in a concluding sentence is part of what falls under this concept of revising argumentative text. Now, if you think about that concept of revising argumentative text, students actually do better when the item says, "Select evidence to support an argument." That they're better at than they are coming up with a proper conclusion. But they're not as good at actually, if we give them statements from an argument and just lay them out and say, rearrange these and put them in the right order to make a coherent argument, that, those kind of items, they're not doing as well on. So again, we're hoping if we release this, and we said we're looking to release two to three items per grade with this kind of information going with the item, so that to give teachers more concrete information about where students are doing well, where they're not. We can't with two to three items cover the entire grade-level standards, but hopefully with some of the overall findings, give teachers something as they move forward to focus on. We also want to include in these reports a preview for 2015, to get this information out to parents in particular, but also to teachers. I think teachers have lots of ways finding this out, but reports are really a good way to reach the parents. And that next year's assessments are built on the same standards, same targets, majority of the tests will be based on similar items. What's being added next year is that every student will respond to one essay prompt for ELA. The ELA prompt will be based on a passage or two that they read first, and the passage could be, an ELA could be a literary passage, with a literary analysis. It could be a scientific passage or a history government passage, in which case they may overlap with our other testing. In mathematics, every student will answer one multiple-step math performance task, and we're also going to be field testing listening passages and items. Next summer, summer of 2015, is when we'll set the new performance levels. So that's when we're actually going to try and look at what is good enough on this assessment. We will be working with the Board of Regents on the high school test to make sure that the cut score there is something that will inform them as children, or they're not children at that point, young adults, leave the public school system in Kansas and move on, particularly to community colleges. If they don't take an SAT or an ACT before going to the community college, hopefully this will provide them information that'll help community college determine, does a student need to enter into remedial course, and they go straight into a credit-bearing ELA or math course. And then KSDE will set the new annual measurable objectives. Brad talked about the accountability and the waivers in his report out, and that will be done next summer, so we can create our new AMOs. And we will have full reports released then in late summer or early fall of 15. The other opportunity this gives us, not rushing through this year, one thing I really like to do is create sort of a dummy report and then bring together focus groups of people who are going to be using the reports, so that the individual student report or the parent report gets sent out to parents. We have a report card or a focus group with parents to say, how do you interpret this report? What does this mean to you? What does this say about your child? And get some feedback from them. Because that's, understanding how parents interpret a report is the best way to determine how to best organize it, format it, et cetera. how to best organize it, format it, et cetera, for them. And the same thing with teachers, with principals, with district folks. So that'll be available, and we'll work on that over the school year to be available next year. So after this slide, Scott's going to come up to talk about the course of action we need to move forward. I'm hoping I'm not in here every single month explaining the problems we've had, but there's some things coming up that I will be back to talk to you about. We are planning what we call Break Kite Day, which is, this fall, we would like to set up a day where we have, if we can, every school in the state, get their kids onto Kite and test on that day. We will have a sample test set up, a very short sample test, because it's not meant to take up a whole class period, but a short sample test set up that will use everything. It'll have video, video on it, it'll have TE items, it'll have text-to-speech. We are going to try and max out the school's bandwidth, because we need to know that now, so that we have time to work with the schools and get everything in shape for spring. So we call it Break Kite, because we're trying to see if we can break the system. Because if we can break it now, we can fix it before it goes live in March. If we can't break it now, they should be good to go in March. We are going to have new practice tests and new test lists that are linked to our new standards. This is what we'll use for Break Kite Day. I'll give you periodic updates on what we're doing to improve Kite. I want to show you some samples when we get there of the new essays and the new math performance tasks, give you some updates on the listening items, and some additional accommodations we'll be delivering through Kite. Just a preview, right now, listening for kids who are deaf and hard of hearing is a bit of an oxymoron, so for them, listening is using sign language without having accompanying text next to it. So we will be developing sign language video to go with the listening, the audio on the computer. So for a hearing child, they will simply press play on the audio. For a non-hearing child, they will have a video underneath it that they will press play, and they will get a standardized ASL video, and they will have to answer the same questions through their listening test. And with that, where'd you go? I saw George came in. Your turn.
I will, at the very least, introduce George Abel, who's a big help. He is from Emporia, Chair of the Kansas Assessment Advisory Council, represents that group, always a wonderful ear and eye in helping us prepare these, these PowerPoints. And that's, that's a group that, as I said, we'll continue to consult going forward, always. They're, they're every, at every step along the way. I think this group has received, I think the board has received, if not last month, the month before, a list of all of the members of the Assessment Advisory Council, I think, 30 districts?
Right.
Yeah, 30 districts are represented, Kansas districts, on that, on that group. So last but not least, I have a very short recommendation, and this is exactly the wording that we are proposing, in light also of the, I'll call it an alternative report, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. This is not the kind of information that we're providing, we, we hope also to provide in the future, not just this year. So in the future, one of the benefits that we think that is gained from this report is that we're helping set the groundwork for some additional kinds of reports next year, even when we do have performance data. So it's not the case that it's just something that we would do this year, given the, given the problems, and then forget about it. And I also think that it would, it's going to have information that's valuable for teachers, for central office people, and for tech people locally. There's additional information that we didn't provide the board on operating systems and information that was gained of a technical nature, that we just didn't think, thought it was somewhat beyond the scope of the recommendation today, but it would possibly be included in that report. So even tech people locally will find benefit from the feedback that we provide. So again, the language that I was thinking about is moved that the Kansas State Department of Education not produce or report any individual building, district, or state-level assessment results for 2014. That is this agency's official recommendation.
Thank you. Before we move forward then, are there questions or comments before we get to the point of the motion? I think Brad had a comment for us.
Well, mine could have been more towards the end, but it was, basically, I just wanted to thank, again, George, the CAC, Kansas School Districts, CET, and Scott and his staff for their diligence this past spring. I know one thing we probably assessed more than anything was our character, and, and I think that they came out very high on that, because you look through all the advantages and the successes that we gained from our experience this year to help us move forward in the future, is much better than had we given the old test again last spring that was aligned to standards that were retired four years ago, and especially to say that some kid is proficient or, or exceeds on something that is not aligned to what's going on in the classroom anymore. I think that would have been worse than anything we could have done. So I just wanted to, to thank our educators across the state, Scott's team, and Mary Ann's team for, for all their hard work.
And I'd like to second that. Since we mentioned that George Abel is here.
Hi, George.
I can verify.
I, I just wondered if, George, do you have any comments about this or anything you'd like to say since you're Chair of that committee?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Kansas Assessment Advisory Council does meet regularly with the agency, people that work on the assessments, as well as CET people. I would echo what Brad said. If nothing else, we, we did practice the mathematical practices, and persistence does pay off. I think it was a valuable experience for our, our students, for our teachers. We appreciate the diligence that CET and the agency provided in getting us through that landmine that is coming from somewhere in the world, that, you know, created many, many issues in, in the buildings. But I, I would echo what Brad said. It was a much more valuable experience for students, teachers, school districts, using the college and career-ready standards-based assessment, rather than going back to, to an old assessment that we really would probably have not paid a whole lot of attention to the results, since that's not what most students were receiving in their classrooms. So, thank you.
Thank you, George, and thanks for being here today. I see that Sally Cobble has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've got two. One is a technical question, just out of curiosity. In testing the Kite and, and the technical side of that, did you find any of our schools not to have enough bandwidth that they are going to have to spend some money on?
Yes. And actually, one of the things my team is working on is, and we're communicating with districts right now, but there's actually an app that schools can download to see on every single computer how much bandwidth is getting to that computer. Because one of the things we found is a misunderstanding that I have X amount of bandwidth in the building, so therefore, I'm meeting the minimal requirements listed on the Kite website, except that that bandwidth in the building is used for all the phones in the building, the internet through the entire building, everything that's going on in that building. And so when a student sits down at a, at a computer and takes a test, they may not have access to the bandwidth they need to get, to be able to take the test successfully. So one of the things we're going to do on Break Kite Day is encourage everybody to get this, this app, that they can actually see the bandwidth on every single computer. So if they start seeing a slowness or a problem on a computer, they can run this app, see, "How much have I got? Is that my issue?" And so our, our technology group is going to work with the technology coordinators across the state to, to see if we can help with that. But yes, that is a concern we have.
Okay, now I'm going to do a follow-up question on that. If they have enough bandwidth coming in, can they shut some things down during a test day? Or is that unrealistic?
I think you just exceeded my knowledge. That sounds reasonable, but I don't know.
Okay. Madam Chairman, thank you, you asked my question. This goes to our chairman. Madam Chairman, I, I can support the recommended motion, but it doesn't say everything to me. I would like for the motion to include Mary Ann's portion of the presentation on the support materials and the support help that will be going out to the schools, to be included in the motion. I think with us wanting to make sure that our tests have become teaching tools and not just reporting data, that I think that we need to include in the motion that, and I'm not a wordsmith person, so I'm not real sure how we should add that information, but I really want the teachers to see the information that they fell high and low in. I really want them to see a mock-up of a, of a report that they will receive and have the ability to go to a focus group to read that report, even though it's not on an actual one of their students. But if we're going to be using this as a teaching tool, I think our motion needs to, to reflect that. And so I would like to add more to the motion.
So the motion should, could read, it is moved that KSDE not produce or report any individual building, district, or state assessment level results for 2014, and that CET move forward with developing student and parent reports. Someone help me here.
I'm just going to go back.
I just called it a lessons learned report. I don't know if that's a good report or not.
We don't have, obviously, we have examples of the kinds of information that we would provide, but it's not helping you that we don't have a proposed title for that document.
Well, yeah.
I may be the only one on the board that feels that way.
Well, you've used a terminology in here of an alternative assessment report.
And that's by default what I keep calling it. My only hesitation with that is that I wouldn't want it to suggest that it would not, that this kind of information would only be provided this year and not next year, because some, as I said, would be ongoing. But I don't think it necessarily implies that.
Sally, is, is it important that it mention student and parent reports in here?
Yes.
How does that appear to you?
Too small, I'm sorry. Whoops. I just think it's bigger. She looked like she was squinting, so.
No, I was, I was, that's my concentration.
Oh, that was your concentration.
Okay. So in that is that teacher ability to look at a mock-up report, is that?
So that'll be the, the data reports really is for next year. So that's, so that's not this report, that would be, I think that would be a separate sentence, but yes, that'll be for, for next year's report that do include the data. We want to do some focus groups next spring, when we produce, we'll produce the reports with dummy data, and then run the focus groups with parents, teachers, building administrators, and district administrators. And the CAC can help me with that.
So do we need to say reports for 2015 then?
Okay.
Or be more specific that the reports are not for this past year, but for future use? Maybe not.
Depends on whether it's a motion or not. Do motions have to be all one sentence? Can I make any sense?
So, so the, so the notion of incorporating parents, I think what I'm hearing folks say is, we will incorporate parents in the focus groups in addition to Kansas educators in the focus groups when we have performance data in 2015.
Before we have performance data.
Before we have performance data.
So we'll put in some mock data for them to look at it, so that when they get the performance results from 15, they'll know how to interpret that.
That, that's what I want, your mock data, that people can learn how to read the assessments. So when they get them in 2015, it means something and they can understand. So they see that we have a purpose for what we're doing. We're not just, we're just not going on, we're just not going to do the data. But this is, this is all a part of getting it right for 2015. So it's a combined package. If you have a field in a pilot test.
Oh, my gosh, this.
You know, part of that is also informing the parents and students on what it's going to look like, but let's show them what the data might look like if it was correct.
But shouldn't it say for reporting data meaningfully in 2015?
Those keys are right next to each other.
I think the important thing to remember is, this motion was intended for, what do we do with the 2014 data?
Yeah.
Not 2015.
Right.
What do we want to do with the 2014? What do we want to report?
So do we need two separate motions? Or do we even need a motion on the second part of this that we've added?
I feel like, Jenna, we do need that, because otherwise, we're just saying we're not going to report the data, but we have a plan to use what we have learned and, and bring. Sometimes I think what we do is, we don't bring the field up with us as we're developing things. And, and that test might mean more if they can get some results on what, what, what did work and what didn't, as she suggested on test scores. Finding out that poetry was something they need to work on is very important. We did find out some things, and I think we need to release some of those things that we found out. And if we just stayed with the same, that one first part of the statement, then we are not showing at all what we did learn and what we want to do to help the public and the teachers. You know, we're going from a, what I call a test, to an assessment where they can actually use this information. And so we need to let them know how to read it. We can teach them this year how to do that before the 2014. And that's, that's why I wanted to add with, add to it.
It just kind of enhances the original motion. The purpose, yes, was as Brad said, but this indicates the board is interested in some future actions. So do you have any problem with that?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
It gives us what we need for this year, and as you said, ties this year to next, and lets folks understand that we're thinking not just about this year in isolation, but rather going forward. So it certainly helps us.
Okay, thanks. So I see we have several other comments. I'll call on these folks. I, I guess you didn't actually make this motion yet. Did you?
I can, if that would help you.
Well, we can have the discussion after the motion, I think, if you, since you have the floor, if you want to move that we do this.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Deana Horst. Now we will have discussion. Deana, you had a comment.
Well, my initial comment was similar in questions about how that will look to the public. Because you're just saying, hey, we're just not, we just, it's almost like we just messed up this last year. And I think we did find out things, and I think we need to make- And I think we did find out things, and I think we need to make the public aware that we did find out some things. We may not be going to put it in numbers the way they are used to receiving it, but it's going to be in text form. So, I think this solves my, a lot of my, my initial response to just saying, all we're doing is not reporting. So, I, I thank you. I do have a question about whether individual teachers will receive information specifically about what their, how their students in general did, and at least teachers, even if, and I think some parents would probably like to know in general how their students, where their students had, if, had difficulties. So, is that possible to, to share with, with individual teachers and maybe building level, whatever? But I, I just think it's some, those things are key to helping teachers move forward for this next year.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, but unfortunately, I think the answer's no for this year. Because I, to me, I think the worst thing I can do is give teacher misinformation. And so, if I say a student is struggling, students in your class appear to be struggling with this kind of item, items that measure this kind of content, and it turns out it's because they tested on a day where they couldn't download that content, I don't want to tell a teacher to focus on stuff that had nothing to do with what their kids didn't, did or didn't know. So, that kind of data makes me nervous. Where I want to go in the future, as Scott mentioned, is continue this kind of report that I just showed you, but on that second bullet where it says about half the students' P equals .49, which means 49%, answered this item correctly, it would then say, in the state, 52% in your district answered this correctly, and 55% in your school answered this correctly. So, we would give that kind of information in the future when we have confidence that I can, I can have these P values, the statistics that go down to a classroom or school level that I feel have a lot of reliability. This year, and quite honestly, this statistic right here is only from April 11th to May 16th. We just kind of put aside the data from the first part of the window where we just don't know what to do with interpreting our items answered incorrectly because students don't know the content, or because the item did not display correctly, or because they got kicked out while they were working on it. There's too many unknowns in that, in those first few weeks, so we don't want to do anything with those.
Thank you.
I would only add that I think our conversation up to this point has been about this document, the audience for this document being districts. But this is, there's nothing about this that we couldn't make very, very public in terms of having it on our website. It's, I would assume it's also, would be submitted to the U.S. Department of Education as a part of, it's, it's very, very transparent in terms of the information provided. Just returning for a second to the bandwidth question, this is something that we could probably capture in the report in some way. One of the things that I know anecdotally through phone calls is that because of the Kite engine and the application that Mary Ann mentioned, schools are very, very attentive, some say for the first time, are we getting what we're paying for? And it's because of this engine and what is, what is there on discrete machines that's helping the IT folks in districts ask, ask very important questions. So, anyway, I don't know whether that gets to your concern.
And I think it's helpful, though, for the public, parents, teachers, to know that the reason why we're saying that we don't feel comfortable releasing the data is that we don't know whether it's because the student didn't know the data, the information, or is it because they were kicked off in the middle of it, or some other reason?
And I think we could easily provide a narrative capturing that.
I think if we could frame, frame that in some sort of a, a report, rather than just a little simple statement, will be helpful for many folks who are looking for those numbers. And they'll still be critical, but at least they know why. And they know you didn't just kind of shove it aside and say, oh, well. Thank you.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I was kind of going where Deana was going, because I was concerned, we knew this was a transition year. We knew that in the beginning. And I guess my question, just to kind of sum it up, the, some of what Deana has said, had we not been attacked, or hacked, or whatever terminology you may use, and things had basically gone well with the testing in our buildings, would we have reported the data at that time?
My answer would be yes. I think I sort of go back to, and I don't want to speak for Mary Ann, but I'm assuming that, as she said, there, in fact, I go back to maybe May, and I think I was quoted as saying, there will be problems. It's just a matter of the magnitude of those problems. We've done this before in terms of rolling out test engines, but no one foresaw the kind of problem that, that we experienced in terms of an offshore distributed denial of service attack. I don't want to.
So, to answer your question, the, what we would have done is looked at every item and decided which items we did not want to include in score reporting, because the data didn't look okay. And because typically, we lose about 10 to 15, up to, maybe up to 20% of our items in field testing, because we realize, oops, one of the instructors actually could be considered correct if you looked at it this way, and so that's not a fair question. Things like that, we end up having to throw out items. We would have taken what was left, put everything on a scale, and projected a score for each student based on the items they took, and, and the items that were parallel to the ones that they did took, but that worked. So, they would have gotten a score, it would have just been what we called a, more of a projected score. So, that was the intent.
Okay. Well, I think I would agree with Deana. I think it's very important that the public be informed of exactly why. You know, that normally we would do this, but because of these challenges, this is why we're not doing it this year, because I do think this is very extremely important.
I could go back in the slide and, and use sort of a thematic approach for that report that we provide, explaining what happened. Just those three issues that we've discussed, reliability, validity, and fairness, without, and I think those are sensible themes for, for the public to understand, those are the kinds of things that we're concerned about.
I would, I would agree, and I think, I think that's very important. Secondly, and this is just for our information, or maybe everyone's information, have you or have you found out anything regarding the attack?
We have turned the investigation over to the proper authorities, and I have not been updated on any investigation that is occurring.
Okay, I would like to ask that if you do find out, we would appreciate being informed, because I think that's important that we.
Yep.
If we find out if it was a 16-year-old, or was it, you know, a group?
And just as a, a point of interest, I asked our tech leader two weeks ago if it was still ongoing. The answer's yes. It's just, our, our new solution is working. But you can almost picture a, a defense shield around Kite, and we still see all the guns and the bullets coming in from the outside. We're just no longer, we're behind the shield now. But it's still happening.
Thank you. And one last question, and this is for Brad. Since we will not be able to offer results, will this impact our waiver?
We will. That'll be a new amendment to our waiver. Now that the board has, or whatever the board decides, we will amend our waiver, but clear back to the day, there was even a movie titled this. The day after we learned what was causing the issues, I had called the U.S. Department of Ed and informed them, and they've been in conversation with us every since then. And they assured us that they would support us in whatever we need to do to move forward, but they would not hold us accountable to report something that was not reliable, valid, or fair. So, but yes, we will have to amend and, and let them know what we will and will not be able to do, and how that would affect accountability. But it, it won't affect priority schools, focus schools, really. It would be almost like giving the old test again, and as George said, they would not have, schools would not have paid attention to the, the old data. So, it was better to learn something that is meaningful than to have given an old test that wasn't meaningful. So, I'm confident we will be fine.
Thank you.
As I recall, when we discussed this, however long ago, we knew that this would be ineffective field test, that it was a trial run. And I'm just wondering if testing companies typically release results of field tests, because that's kind of a time, like you said, when you're determining if the questions are reliable, valid, all of those things. And I, I thought that many times, those results were not released. So, could you tell me what typically is done?
So, I'm probably going to show my bias here, but you're absolutely right. Prior to 2004, in the testing field, we would never release field test results. It would be used solely to build the next test. Things changed under No Child Left Behind, when the federal government was really pushing states to develop these tests fast and to produce results instantly, or they would lose Title I funds. I mean, that was back where they weren't just saying you had to use Title I funds in a certain way, they were saying, we're going to strip you of your Title I funding if you don't do things. So, in my, the psychometric field that I'm in, we had to devise what may, ways, which is what I just summarized quickly, of, of, we field test the best items we've got, we pull out the ones that didn't work, we put everything on the scale, we project scores of students, and that way, we can make the federal government happy. It is not the best psychometric practices, but it is what we have been forced to in our, in our industry. So, that's, that's where we are, but it is not best testing practices.
Yeah, well, personally, I, I went into this thinking probably the results would not be reported, so I've been kind of surprised by, by the cry for, for releasing results that really don't tell you what you want to know and can lead to false judgments and assumptions, so.
Yeah, and to be honest, before the DDoS, I mean, we were told by the federal government, you will, even though it's a transition test, you will release results, you will use them for accountability, you will use them for AMOs. We were told we had to do all of this, so we were preparing to meet those requirements. And DDoS is a blessing in disguise? No, no, no. But it, but it is, you're right, I, I wouldn't have been as comfortable anyway, certainly wouldn't have been comfortable making judgments about anybody based on these data. Reporting, FYI, is one thing. Reporting and making judgments or using it to evaluate anything or anyone, I'd have been very uncomfortable with.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you go, Scott, to the, where the recommendation is right now? Okay, now, my understanding is, we're really making a recommendation for the 2014 data.
That's correct.
I'm assuming there will be another recommendation next year that we will probably make for the 2015 data.
That's correct.
Okay, so, that's one thing I wanted to make clear, that this really is looking at where we are right now with our data.
That's right.
On this year.
That's right. And it's, and it, as matter of factly as I can state it, this is about whether or not we will be in possession, whether or not CETE will send us on a nightly web service data that is at the individual building, district, and state level. And if, depending upon what happens with this recommendation, we're recommending that we not get that.
And I do like the idea of providing those student and, the teacher and parent information that report. I think that's good valuable information. And as Janet mentioned, you know, whether we'd gone with CETE or Smarter Balance, this was going to be a transitional year. And there would have been issues we've had to deal with, and Kite would have been used with even Smarter Balance.
That's correct.
So, we would have probably had Kite issues anyway.
And, and assuming that we would have still had the DDoS, navigating through those problems, it would, we would have had another party involved, i.e. Smarter Balanced, using the Kite engine. So, the notion of troubleshooting it locally would have been, we wouldn't have been doing that. We would have been troubleshooting it, you know, with a, a new provider, so to speak.
Yeah. And has Smarter Balance done field tests this year in Park? They've also both done field tests. So, that's been going on throughout the country, as we get ready to really, so to speak, go live in 2015 with our data, and hopefully accurate results.
That, that's correct.
I might add, you know, we had planned to field test 10% of our students under Smarter Balance. When we moved away from that, we basically field tested 100% of our kids on the new Kansas State Assessment. So, every state was field testing. We were just able to field test all of our kids, which I think is more meaningful.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Picking up on what Kathy was talking about, I thought that our, our vote back in December to, to not go with Smarter Balance was, was really the board in its finest hour since I've been here. I really do. I, I think that, I'm willing to say that I want to take a large step back from Kansas college and career-ready standards, and in fact, say, I, I don't support the Common Core. And in effect, I'm saying Kansas college and career-ready standards are, we, we're putting too much emphasis on them. But I know we're going to have standardized testing. I've been saying for years that, I haven't phrased it very well in political avenues and so forth, that said, we're going to have to eat something called Common Core, because the world's richest man and the world's largest corporation is behind it. So, we're going to have standardized testing, I realize that. And I have to say, I like the way you speak. I like to hear you talk, because a lot of my life was in engineering, and I worked with technical people who talk like you. And you speak very well, Dr. Perry and Dr. Smith. So, thank you for your efforts. So, instead of coming out swinging against Common Core for political reasons, which is not my intent, I want to echo that this board pushed back against the corporate movement to do this business for business reasons. And I've heard a lot of talk today about the right reasons to do the testing. Mrs. Cobble suggested that the real reason for testing is to give teachers an insight into how their students individually are performing, if I could paraphrase it that way. And that's right. That's the way we need to go. So, thank you for your efforts. Coming out against Common Core, it's, it's edgy, you know, there's political overtones. I don't mean to upset the apple cart, because I know we're going to do standardized testing. But as we move forward, we put things in their proper priorities, a little less corporate involvement, and a little more involvement of parents and families. Thank you very much.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, just a point of clarification for next year. Teachers and students will not be receiving instantly test information on performance. That's gone.
Correct.
Okay. Will we ever be at that point again, do you anticipate?
The one thing that will keep us, I mean, next year, they can't right away, because we have to set cut scores. So, until we know Level 1, 2, 3, 4, we don't have anything we can produce instantly. The following year, theoretically, because we're going adaptive, and because we're going to have everything already set, we could produce instant scores with one exception, and that is, the essays and the math performance tasks have to be hand scored. So, I don't see us producing instant results, because my, what I've seen in some states is they produce instant results for the machine scoreable stuff, and then later give the essay results and the total score. My observation has been that that devalues the essay and the math performance task, and it values.
and it values the multiple choice stuff, because that's what the teachers see first and react to. So my preference is wait till we have it all together, release it all at once. That's obviously not my decision to make, that's just a preference. So when you say ever, we are working very hard with, and by we, I mean the field, not CET or KSD in particular, but the field is working very hard. CCSSO, our Council of Chief State School Officers, has made it a priority to invest with universities to look at automated scoring protocols, and how can we get better at having computers score student work? Now, my opinion is, I don't ever want to take the human out of it, because the human is the one that'll notice, hey, a student took a really different approach to this question, that is unique, and it is good, and it should be rewarded, but it isn't captured by what the computer is doing. So I think we always will have humans in it. But we could get to the point where we produce an instant score, and then audit by humans later, and adjust as needed. But that is probably four to five years away.
Well, where we are today is that students and teachers, and parents, are used to instant scoring reports. Students find out when, before they leave the test center, whatever classroom or center, how they did in their performance, you know, and that's a cultural expectation now. And I think it's in our best interest in making sure that they don't use that as a measure of whether KITE or the whole assessment system is working effectively, that they not have that expectation. You know, it's one of those things out of our control. You've done a really good job of turning this disaster into a great learning opportunity. And I give you guys credit for that. We learned a great deal from the challenges, the mistakes, the readiness where we were or where we thought we were, and we'll have a much better product. The expectations will be very high for you next year. That's why I wanted to clarify, be sure they know exactly what those expectations of success are, and they're not going to be measured against prior experiences. There's going to be new experiences. But I'd also like to do one other thing. That's a shout out to all the teachers and students who, this past spring, have gone through basically a very difficult situation, that they didn't see quite as much as a learning experience as we have. And they helped us in that learning experience. But the thing that I learned the best was how really capable the people who do the assessments in our state, the teachers, the assessment coordinators, the administrators, and all, and the students are, and how they helped us, you know, be better for next year. So thank you to them in the field, and we appreciate your support, and we're going to be doing new things, we're going to ask you to do new things. Take that character with you into the future, and this will be very successful. Thank you.
John Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, there's not really anything that I disagree with that's been said. The, this, I think, is probably the largest contract that this board approves. One of the largest ones was CET for testing. And I think the disappointing part for me is, is this all there is? You know, we spent all this money, and what does our contract say? And I don't know if that's something that maybe we need to talk about in an executive session, but, you know, I think that we have an obligation to the taxpayers to make sure that this testing contract, that we get all of our, what we say we are going to get out of it, out of it, for our money. I understand that this was a, kind of a pilot year for this particular test. I think, you know, as a state, we need accountability, and we need a way to measure students' progress. And I've always been in favor of a state assessment. I think it's one of our keys that we use to measure how well we're doing. So, you know, this problem that CET had this year was manmade, in my view. We chose to use a test that used the internet, that's susceptible to attack, everybody knows that. And so I would be interested in knowing next year, I mean, if we get attacked again, then what? I mean, we don't have to go this route to get the information we need, the students need, the teachers need, parents. So, you know, I need to hear, or at least put it into the contract some way, that we have, we're guarding ourselves against a repeat. So that's really all I had to say about that. I have another question on this particular motion. It says that KSD will not produce a report. Well, how are you going to produce a report about scores if you don't have them in your possession? So to me, it's not explaining that the test data is not even here. It's still with our contractor. And I don't know if the contract says they have to produce data to, for us, or what it states, but I don't know if that's the correct language in that motion. I guess, you know, it's too expensive, we just cannot be funding a research project for CET. You need to produce what you said that you would in the contract, what we're paying you for. And, you know, I like CET, we've worked with you for many years, but, you know, this is big stakes. And so I have expectations, and I think the taxpayers do as well. Thank you.
Yes, you should. If I may respond real quickly to one point that never made the news, was not publicized, but I do want to make you aware. One of the other tests we run is the CALPA, the Kansas English Language Proficiency Assessment. It is paper, it is bubble sheets. We had the UPS truck from Kansas City, Kansas, brought boxes of the bubbles, of the Scantron sheets back to Kansas, or back to KU, lost two of the boxes on the side of the road. We finally got a box mailed to us, covered in motor oil, and driven all over, ripped to shreds. We lost quite a few scores from Kansas City, Kansas, that couldn't be reproduced, because they were completely destroyed. So I don't know that there's a fail-proof way to testing, I really don't. Absolutely, we need to, and we are having meetings internally at CET. And I think that you're making a very good point, is that in a future meeting, I need to bring forward more specifics about our plans for what is Plan B, if anything happens like an attack in the future. What are we going to do? How will we handle it? Because we absolutely are putting those plans into place. I'm not going to stand here and say they're foolproof, because I don't think anything is in this day and age. But it is important to recognize that I hear everything you're saying, you're absolutely right. We did our best, and we failed to meet everything that was asked for us. I am very cognizant of the fact we are spending Kansas taxpayer money. We are taking up teacher time, we are taking up student time, student energy, teaching time, learning time. This has got to work. And all I can say is, we are, we're well aware of it, we are moving forward, and I will give you whatever update you need in the future to feel more confident in this.
Great, thanks. With regard to the reports, I'm just wondering what was behind that. I think what's behind that is the report card. So those are, and maybe we should mention specifically the report card, because that's what will be different as a result of our not having these scores. But we thought reports would be a little more inclusive.
Well, it's my understanding that then in the second part of this motion, we're going to produce a report. I mean, so we have to be specific. I thought we were reporting on exactly what we learned on this particular assessment for 2014. That, my understanding is, we don't want to report data, results of the tests. And this says, we're not going to produce any report. And I thought that's exactly what was in our information today. We've got reports that we're going to give to students, parents, teachers.
Can I?
Yeah. If we qualify or.
We, the way this should be interpreted is, CET develops and administers, and they feed the data to us on a nightly feed. Our agency staff then does the building report card, which is out on our website. So to interpret what this says is, we, as an agency, will not produce the individual building, basically the report card. But it does say that we will move forward with providing the grade level, the specific, that type of stuff, about how 4th graders did in Kansas on certain items. But as an agency, we will not be doing the report cards, and we will not be submitting the schools' individual reports, which we do. CET does not do that.
So why wouldn't, at the first line up there, say, that includes scores? You know, any, produce any report or individual.
Or maybe the verb.
That includes score.
Report, as opposed to the noun report in that first sentence is causing some confusion. It's move that the KSD not produce or report.
Scores, yeah.
Yes. Performance data.
Just change that to scores instead of results.
Yeah.
Because we're going to produce some results, just.
Trying to say what it originally. It's better for me, I think it's, I didn't make the motion.
There is John.
Oh, it's the last one.
We're in informal class here.
That suits me well.
Yeah, I think putting scores in there, like you did after assessment, is clearer. You know, it gives us the ability to issue reports about the assessment results without reporting the scores.
Yeah, you like it.
I like it better, yeah.
I believe we had a motion on the floor, didn't we not?
Yes, but I would, I like what he suggested, and I would.
So you would, you would.
Accept the.
Changes to the motion?
Yes.
So do, I get bogged down in this.
And.
So Dana, Sally had made the motion, Dana seconded the motion, they both accept the changes to the original motion. Is there anything else I need to say there? Okay, all right. So we do have a motion on the floor, we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion as amended, then, raise your right hand. Okay, the vote is nine zero. Thank you very much. And I did have one more comment that didn't relate to the motion. You mentioned formative assessment, and that you were, you even said you were thinking of just doing away with that, maybe?
No, no, I wasn't clear. We have allowed, I'll take full responsibility of this, because I'm not one to try to coerce from this agency best practices. I leave that to the individual teacher. We had a decision to make some time ago, as to whether or not we should allow access to the formative engine. In other words, I can get in this thing after the assessment window has begun. So there are those, and Mary Ann, you can jump in here, who would say that it's in keeping with the definition of a formative assessment, that it be done prior to the summit. It's not a practice test. Problem is, they work very well as practice tests. And so, once the assessment window has begun, we know now that, it's sort of a seismograph type monitoring, that just prior to the assessment window, and then during the assessment window, use spikes, it skyrockets. And instructionally, there are a lot of folks who would say, that was never the intent of formative assessments. So I was only talking about shutting that off.
At a certain point.
At a certain point, which quite honestly, I'm still disinclined to do, but that's something that we can.
Well, I just wanted to put in a plug for formative assessment, because that's one piece that I've heard from so many teachers and building administrators about. They value that and see it as a good tool for them, so.
So just a point of clarification, what I think of formative assessment is not what CET is offering right now. We're offering some testlets, some items to practice that they can use, but a good formative tool really helps a teacher figure out, where is my child along a learning progression, and how do I move them to the next step? And we have, in our long-term discussions where we're going, we're looking around 2016 to start developing really good formative tools that'll help teachers and students navigate the new standards better. What we have right now is a testlet pool aligned to the current standards, that are grouped by strand, that teachers can use to give to the kids. So I'm calling it the testlet pool. The testlet pool requires teachers to go in, choose a testlet, assign it to students in educator portal, and then the students take it, and the responses are scored, so the teacher can go back into educator portal, see the responses, and figure out where the student is. As Scott said, that's a really good practice throughout the school year. It's not a great practice the day before a test. At that point, that's just cramming. What we will have are the practice tests we had last year, last spring, we are working on right now to improve. One of the things we'll add to it is the text-to-speech. We're going to add more items to it. The big difference about the practice test compared to the testlet pool is, practice tests do not require teachers to assign students to the tests. Any student who has a username and login ID does not need a ticket number, can get in and take a practice test. It does not store their responses, so it takes up much less bandwidth and capacity to run those, and those that can run throughout the summit of testing window.
Well, since this is a new format, I think there's value in just giving them practice with that type of format. So anyway, that's a discussion for later. But thank you so much for all the work and frustration and so forth that have been involved in the past few months.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is going to be presented by Colleen Riley. And is Jana here, or are you on your own? I didn't see her. There she is.
Yes, we are here. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. Today, we have two things that we're going to share with you regarding our emergency safety interventions. First of all, our current chair, Brian Wilson, will be explaining to you an item that is in your notebook, that is a receive item. And then Jana will be providing an update on the ESI process that we've been going through this year, and next steps. So I will introduce Brian at this time.
Yeah, a little bit. There you go. Good morning. As Colleen said, my name is Brian Wilson, I am the current outgoing chair for the Special Lit Advisory Council. SEAC recommends that Kansas State Board of Ed adopt proposed KAR 91423, as drafted by KSD staff in consultation with stakeholders from public schools. Proposed KAR 91423 would only exempt certified law officers from the Emergency Safety Interventions Regulations. The need to exempt certified law enforcement officers from ESI regulations stems from the direct conflict between the ESI regulations, prohibition on prone face-down restraint, and a sworn certified law enforcement officer's need to use prone restraint when effectuating an arrest. If law enforcement officers are not permitted to use prone restraint when arresting an individual, this puts the student being arrested, the officer, other students, and school staff at risk. As Chief Ron Brown, the Director of School Safety for Topeka Public Schools, said in his testimony to SEAC, "When police are called into a situation when a student is in immediate danger and an arrest is necessary, the officer who has a loaded firearm cannot lose." When SEAC made the previous recommendation to you, the Kansas State Board of Ed, for ESI regulations to apply to all school personnel, we never intended to interfere with the duties of our sworn certified law enforcement officers, ensuring the safety of Kansas students and teachers. This exception will allow certified law enforcement officers to continue to keep our schools safe. If you look at the proposed KAR 91423 in front of you, you will see that subsection A lists all of the necessary definitions to help district staff understand who this exception will apply to and who it will not. Subsection B states that campus police officers, school law enforcement officers, and school resource officers are exempt from the ESI regulations. School security officers are not exempt from the ESI regulations. School security officers are employed by a school district to assist law enforcement if needed, but these individuals are not certified law enforcement, and do not possess the authority to arrest someone. The clear definitions in subsection A will assist districts when determining which district employees will be exempt from ESI regulations and which will not. SEAC asks that you approve KAR 91423 as drafted by K- SEAC asks that you approve KAR 91423 as drafted by KSD staff to ensure that law enforcement officers can continue to use their extensive training to help keep our schools safe. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there some school districts who have their own police force in the state? So where do they land? Man, I know they're security officers, but I'm talking about school districts who have a police department.
Yes, Topeka is a perfect example. And the example that Brian brought to your attention, Officer Ron Brown came and talked to SEAC in January and, and described what, what their role was within Topeka's school district.
So they then are counted as a police officer.
Yes.
Versus a school security officer.
Yes.
Okay. So both employed by the school district, but they are a police officer.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the, the levels of training are significant. There's significant difference in the levels of training.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that note, is there general agreement within our schools, and this is to anyone who can speak to it, on the difference between a resource officer and security officer because as a layperson, semi-lay now, you know, I don't know the difference. I'm, I'm looking at the definitions here and it reads very well, but out there in the field, is there confusion between the two designations?
That is something we definitely tried to address within the language of the regulations, using the word certified law enforcement officer, because we do realize that there are a multitude of titles out there across the state. So working through who is or who is not exempt based on the definition, it really goes to that certified law enforcement officer piece, which is a, a full-time or part-time salaried officer employee of the state, county or city, whose duties include prevention or detection of crime and the enforcement of criminal or traffic laws of the state. An easy way to think about it is this, could this person arrest somebody outside? Are they a police officer outside?
Respectfully, you're, you're quoting the law very nicely. My question is whether or not folks in our schools understand the difference.
And so this is the first, bringing this to you is the first time we have, we have brought it before for discussion, but it has gone in front of SEAC who brought it forward today. We do realize that if this is something that the board moves forward with and adopts this as an amendment to the ESI regulations as a part three, we'll do the technical assistance and the training to support the field in being able to make those decisions on who is or who is not exempted from these regulations.
But just to, to answer a little bit more fully, one of the reasons why this has taken us a while to have the discussion is because there is confusion. And we have received a lot of input from the field regarding this, as well as in particular the, the request to clarify the different roles. And that was, that's why it was so important to be able to put these definitions together as we have, so that the school staff do understand the differences with the staff training.
Thank you. I'm fine with the police officer getting a waiver. My question had to do with the item that was brought up by the Disability Rights Center today in open forum on the complaint process, appeal. I, I did have a chance to review the transcript of the meeting that we had 17 months ago where, Colleen, you mentioned that you would move on that right away. So I'm trying to determine what your definition of right away is. And when, I mean, I guess SEAC's meeting right now congruent with this meeting here?
No, not today.
Oh, okay. So when is their meeting in July?
Right, our meeting in July of SEAC is July 23rd. And, and I'm glad you brought up the question about the appeals process. That was a recommendation from, from the board when we put the regulations in place. But right away, yeah, I would like to move on everything right away. You know my sense of urgency. The, the challenge though, in implementing any type of regulations, is implementing the regulations. And there have been many ins and outs of these regulations that have created great confusion across the state. And so what our team has chosen to do, and we have provided the feedback at SEAC meetings regularly, this is an update item every SEAC meeting, is to really take the technical assistance as the problems have arisen, including the use of proper behavior interventions in our schools. We've had a few of our schools that are, that were still using the prohibitive types of restraints, and so our technical assistants really focused on making sure that those restraints were not used in our schools this last year. The appeals process was introduced to our SEAC in April. The Disability Rights Center, Ms. Johnson, came and provided public comment, and it was part of Jana and Laura's update at that time. So SEAC did hear about it for the first time in, as far as a discussion item in April, and it is part of the discussion item moving forward in July.
Have they been able to review the process, the proposed process?
No, they were not able to because our general counsel provided a hard copy to SEAC the end of March, but our materials were already prepared for SEAC for our April meeting. And so like you, we want to have an opportunity to include all stakeholders. And so SEAC will be having that conversation starting in July and moving into this next year about the appeals process.
So in their, in their packet, in their information, will they have a copy of this proposed change to the regulation that includes the appeal?
In their July packet?
Yes, I guess.
I don't, I don't believe so because, well, maybe it is. I'm going to have to look. It is on the agenda for discussion, but we.
Well, how can you discuss something if you don't have it in front of you?
Well, that was part of the, that was part of the frustration in April, was the SEAC members did not have it in front of them in order to be able to discuss it.
Let's get it in front of them.
We're going to be doing that exact thing. Our July meeting is July 23rd. It is a half-day meeting, which is orientation for new members, and it includes an ESI update. That ESI update will include all of the events that have taken place since the regulations went into place and what our next steps are going to be for going into this next year as SEAC members. When we come back to Topeka in September, we will have that as a main topic item as well, and all stakeholders will be able to be part of the process because what will happen in July is it will be an open meeting discussion. So members like superintendents, principals, Kansas Association of School Boards, families together, as well as Disability Rights Center, those stakeholders will have been notified about it and will be able to be part of the conversation.
So when do you anticipate them receiving these proposed appeal process reg, changes to the reg?
For first discussion, July.
Okay. But when will they get a copy of the proposed changes?
They don't have changes. They have a proposal that the Disability Rights Center has put forth. It's not.
Hasn't our legal though had a chance for it either?
Our legal worked collaboratively with the Disability Rights Center, yes.
And we have another proposal for a possible amendment or appeals process that we will also be bringing forth to SEAC as well.
So we're providing options to them.
In July.
In July. So they'll get both of them?
They'll get options. And then our SEAC and other stakeholders may have additional options that we will, we may put forth. We don't, we don't know.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Okay, we still have more questions. Jim McNeese.
Thank you, John. That was going to be what I was going to talk about. So we'll make this short. Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell.
It caught me off guard.
Off guard too, thank you. Yes, thank you, John. I was going to wait, I didn't know if you had something you, you were going to talk about first, about the ESI.
Well, Jana has a full update to provide to you, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, but since John has already, my concern is, and, and I've visited with you and I've talked to the commissioner just this morning about it, that I really was very disappointed that it's taken, it's going to be like almost two years then before we, February of 2013. My, and Ms. Jana says that she has another proposal. Do you ever send these out to the members prior so that they can study them, so that they can maybe make a decision in July? Because this has just gone on, in my opinion, way too long. As, I think it got sort of lost, did it?
No, it didn't get lost. It was part of the process that we needed to discuss all along. But as I've explained to you, there are lots of, there are lots of phases to the implementation of the regulations. And the second level of appeals, which this is, there is still a first level of appeals, is, is one of those components that we're working through. But as I mentioned, we still had schools that were using the prohibited restraints. And so we wanted to make sure that appropriate technical assistance was provided so that we didn't have instances of students who were subjected to those restraints. Additionally, at the SEAC member that Mr. Bacon asked about in April, our team was asked if we have had any complaints that came to the level of KSDE. And in the 17 months that you've all referred to, we've had one. Jana and Laura and I did have an opportunity to meet with the general counsel, the previous general counsel, and the Disability Rights Center. And we asked them, what do you do with all of those phone calls that you get or those inquiries that you're talking about? Because they weren't sending them on to KSDE with the exception of one. So one of those did make their way to KSDE. So what we've tried to do is to give the field the information that they needed in order to provide the best training for their staff and to ensure the state's safety of students. But we have not forgotten, and it hasn't gotten lost, to do the appeals process.
So I'm hoping that in July, when we initially, you and I talked, it wasn't much time on the agenda, I'm hoping that, that you folks will take enough time to really discuss this instead of just, and I know you've got new members coming, you know, that, and I understand all that. But this is just, I'm very much concerned, how many parents are just not following through? And I really want to see an appeal process, something that comes here. And that last, the one, the situation that we had was in my district, and that family was never contacted by us here in the agency. And I just think that that's, I would just like to see what the proposal, the alternate proposal is too, so I can sort of just understand what's going on because, and today we received this letter from this mother, and this has been some time ago, about her, about a room. And I just think we've got a lot of problems across the state that parents just, a lot of times, parents just don't know how to follow through. And today, when Ms. Johnson made the comment, I thought too, that the calls that they're getting, since we're being told as a board member that we don't get, you know, complaints here, if they would at least refer those names and numbers to us so that we would know.
Well, and we would, we would appreciate those being forwarded to both Laura and Jana. We, we have a team in place to support the parents, to support the, the districts as well.
Okay, okay. But thank you, John.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this may be going to be addressed, because I was going to ask, don't we as a board get an update? And maybe that's what Jana's going to be doing here in just a minute, so.
Yes.
Because that's what I wanted to see was the data. You know, really take a look at what the data shows us, and I'll be very interested to see that if that's what Jana's getting ready to present.
But, but we also did have a very important exemption that we needed to bring to you as a board, and the, the SEAC was extremely thoughtful in bringing forward stakeholders in order to ensure that what we were bringing to you is what was needed. When the SEAC originally passed or, or made a recommendation to you all about ESI regulations, we did not anticipate this conflict in the, with the school safety officers. So this really was something very important that we wanted to get to you, get in front of you right away.
Then I would propose that to approve the, the amendment here.
It's just a receive item.
It's a receive.
So that you guys can have time. We, we do this very same process in SEAC. We, we provide information, we have discussion, we include stakeholders, and then we provide an opportunity to come back and make a formal recommendation.
So will this come back for a vote in August then, since school's starting soon?
I anticipate that being an action item at your next board meeting.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, and then I'll be anxious to hear Jana's report. Thank you.
Well, thank you. There's no additional questions, and hopefully my report will answer some of those concerns that were voiced in, in a little bit of a different way. But we've done a lot this year, and I, I'm really excited to come in front of you and actually talk about the work that not only we at KSDE did from this position, but actually, you know, the field did. The field was given a really short time to implement these regulations, and they did a stellar job of putting these into place, getting the information out to parents, and then following through on the requirements of the regulations. And so that, I don't think that that can be missed in my report, and so I wanted to start with that, going out and beginning with that. And as Laura's pulling up the presentation, you know, this has been one full year of the regulations. So we are now looking at a full year of operating under requirements instead of guidelines. So we expect the data to look different, and we expect the decisions and, and conversations to take a different turn. I will tell you that we do not have the data finalized yet to be able to prepare and present to you today as the final quarter of reporting closed on June 30th. But that is our next step though, is to begin that. So this is, this is just a brief outline of my presentation, do the brief history, which I'll probably fly through, and then highlights of the 2013-14 school year, technical assistance and things going forward that we want to address and draw your attention to. So history of ESI in Kansas, and this just outlines, beginning way back in 2005, I think you've seen this slide on a multitude of occasions, but I think it's worth bringing up again, you know, and looking at this, and especially about the regulations going into effect in April 2013, and really again applies to the field and our TA providers to get that information out to families and to the schools to begin fully in August 2013, the implementation of the ESI regulations in all accredited schools in Kansas. The 13-14 school year reporting, reporting this year was something that was a focus. It's a place of emphasis. Under the guidelines, we had reporting, but there was really no requirement. We were, we were relying on folks, on their best judgment and, and a request from the board, a directive from the board, to do the reporting. But now we have teeth in the reporting. There's a follow-through, it's in regulation. And so we're excited to talk about this piece. We focused on the collection of accurate data to be able to inform you and other stakeholders about the use of ESI in Kansas. Accuracy, we'll get to a little bit later, because that is a piece of technical assistance. There's, these were new words, new definitions, and the application. So accuracy is something that we will continue to work on and drill down forward, but talking about completeness of the reporting, we feel really, really confident in that. How we viewed and worked towards getting complete reporting is that we put into place a system of checks. If you didn't report quarter one, we sent a letter to the school principal and CC'd the superintendent, just a notification that your building did not report ESI data to us for one quarter. Two quarters in a row, we sent a letter to the principal, the superintendent, and we CC'd the local board of education. That got some reactions. You know, that, that got those folks that may have been reticent to get on reporting and realizing their requirements, to take notice and to fulfill this responsibility. Step three, if there was three quarters non-reporting, the letter goes to the principal, the superintendent, the local board of education, and then we would notify you. I will say at this point in time, we have a couple of private accredited schools that have not reported for three quarters in a row, but we are in contact with them and we're working on, and we really believe in those instances, that it is a technical assistance issue, it's not malice, it's not something substantive. But if we find out that it is something different, we will of course come back and report to you on that. But I'm excited to show you these, the numbers. And really, this is a huge kudos to Laura, who has worked diligently on making sure that buildings are reporting, communicating with the building principals, and really doing a full-on information burst to get this reporting. So you can see quarter one, a little bit spotty, 60%. These are brand new, this is right out of the gate. Since then, we're at the 96% of buildings reported, 94% in quarter three. And for quarter four, which just closed on June 30th, we had 98% of buildings reported. And, and that is a fantastic number. Of all buildings. Of all buildings, all accredited schools in Kansas, we have 98% reporting. So our next step, now that we have this data, the quarter four just closing on June 30th, is to do the data analysis. Laura, myself, and a team from the field of some, of some experts on data are going to look at the data and make some determinations about outliers. Who is two standard deviations away? Hi. And then what do we need to do about that? Doing that data drill down, working through that. Is there a misinterpretation of what seclusion is or what restraint is? Or are there deeper seated issues that need some technical assistance from KSD and from RTA providers? We are also doing a random sample of those buildings that reported zeros. So to kind of see what's going on. Do they have all the requirements of the regulations in place? And so this is our plan on going forward, to take a look at the data, provide that data to you, but then follow through with it on our end to address it through technical assistance and a learning opportunity, to really ensure that the ESI regulations are being implemented for all Kansas schools, for all accredited schools across Kansas, for all students. We're also developing an ESI process manual, and this piece gets to the transparency of our work with the field. Because we've, these are brand-new regulations, and some of this stuff we've been, been working on on the fly. How are we going to get reporting up? How are we going to enforce that? And the communication has been really effective, but we want to be transparent with our process and outline that for the field, exactly what will or will not happen? How are we going to do our data analysis? Two standard deviations above the median, taking a look at those schools, what does that drill down look like? Is there onsite? How exactly will we be doing that? And that is pieces, as we're working through this, we're cementing it and putting it into a manual that we can then take the stakeholders in the field and be able to talk about ESI, the ESI regulations in a full picture. Because we want to connect it and make it the clear connection between that and technical assistance. Colleen alluded to this a little bit earlier, but getting to the partnership with the Kansas Learning Network, we had two specialty schools that had some difficulty initially implementing the ESI regulations because of concerns about the use of prone and supine restraint. I'm so happy to report through meetings and technical assistance that they have adopted and are fully implementing the ESI regulations in Kansas, and that is great news. And we are committed to providing them technical assistance as they work through this process to ensure that that does remain. It's not just words, and it's not just sayings, but we are now in partnership with them to ensure success for all students and that their students are free of the use of prohibited forms of restraint. One of the neat things that's going to happen is that at the Kansas Learning Network, it's going to go in and do a buildings needs assessment to look at instruction in the schools and where we can help provide some support and building and looking at how we can prevent their need for the use of seclusion and restraint in those types of settings. And so that's exciting, and that's a new piece, and it's involving some of our other technical assistance providers, people outside our, our team, and bringing them together to take a look in how we can support these schools going forward. The dispute resolution piece, we've talked about this already quite a bit, but this is a piece that we were presented with a draft of dispute resolution language from our former general counsel in the DRC, Ms. Johnson, back in around April. And we began looking at and having some initial conversations. Our team has taken to drafting another set or another proposal to bring to CAC so that there's some discussion to be had with CAC about what is or is not able to be done in terms of enforcement of these ESI regulations. And so we will be presenting that to CAC in July. I want to give you a little data, though, and Colleen alluded to a piece of this as well, is, you know, we feel now that we can make recommendations from a place of knowledge at least one year of full implementation of the ESI regulations about the need for an appeals process, or at least a place to begin the discussion. As Colleen said, we've only received notification of one complaint being filed under the dispute resolution piece of the ESI regulations. And we were forwarded a copy of that decision. And while we agreed with the decision, we had some questions about the rationale or the reasoning that went into that decision. But that allowed us to engage in some conversation with additional stakeholders to make some change in how draft policies look across Kansas, so it was a very big positive. We've received some calls, not a bunch, but some calls about concerns about the use of seclusion or restraint with students in Kansas schools. And we've addressed those on a one-on-one basis, depending on how they come in. I have personally contacted schools, asked for copies of their, their policies, and followed up with the parents to make sure that they are being notified when it's being used with their student. And walking through parents, what are possibilities for action if they so choose, under the dispute resolution piece in the ESI regulations, how they would go about filing a complaint with the local school board, or if they have other options available under special education law in some cases, or contacting other agencies that may be able to assist. We've not had, gotten the feeling from any of those calls that parents have been uncomfortable while utilizing these dispute resolution pieces. But again, if they are, you know, we always appreciate any calls or any concerns being brought forward to us, because we're happy to engage in informal resolution whenever possible, to work with school districts and parents to get a happy resolution for all students and anytime we can. We are, though, with, you know, as we say, and we're proud, I don't know if it's proud that, you know, there's only been one, you know, complaint brought forward under the dispute resolution piece of the ESI regulations. Is that a good or is that a bad thing? You know, what, what does this actually mean? And we've addressed parent calls, so maybe we're getting a lot of those there. When they do come in, we're able to talk through or work through that, and probably the efforts also by outside agencies such as DRC and working with parents has probably reduced maybe the number of utilizing that formal piece. We've also set up meetings and conversations with our parent centers, KPerk and Families Together, to talk about the efforts that we used to reach families this past year. At the beginning of the rollout of the ESI regulations, we developed a family handbook to talk about the ESI regulations. Families Together, I know, in particular, has addressed ESI regulations at many conferences, and they take phone calls a lot and, and, you know, and work through these, these issues with parents. But we are meeting with them again to see how we can better do information, get it out to the parents, support them when necessary if they need to use a dispute resolution piece going forward. So that is meetings coming up there to, to reevaluate, look, and take stock of what we've done this past year and where we're going to go with parents in, in this coming year. Another piece that, that factors into maybe why there haven't been so many complaints utilizing the dispute resolution piece of it is the technical assistance. And I'm going to have Laura go through these slides with you, but we have done a ton of technical assistance. The regulations require training on the use of positive behavior intervention supports, prevention, and de-escalation, all of those to prevent or eliminate the need for the use of seclusion and restraint with Kansas students. And that is really where the focus has been. And so we're going to run through this, and we think that this has had a positive effect in Kansas schools and a positive effect on, on student outcomes.
I'm Laura Jerkison, and I'm not going to make you read all of these slides on this, the assistance our incredible service providers have done this, this school year, but I will just scan through them and give you an idea of, of what we were doing. What we didn't, we only included things on, on these slides from this school year. And so when the regulations went into effect, Jana and I and a couple of our service providers went across the state, make, and did regional presentations, making sure that districts knew what the requirements were under the regulations, made sure they knew what was expected of them. So beginning this school year, what ESI Part II was, was just a brief overview again of the regulations and then helping districts understand how to use their data to make decisions. We brought in Dr. Randy Sprick, who some of you may know, to, to do CHAMPs across the state. This was to support teachers and other professionals in classroom management, prevention, de-escalation, so that they had other tools in their toolbox to avoid the use of seclusion and restraint. We reached out to early childhood practitioners as well, providing them information on the regulations. We brought in Jane Harris, who works with Dr. Randy Sprick, and she presented something called ParaPro, which was not just for para-professionals, but any staff that would work with students that aren't teachers. So secretaries, food service, anyone who has contact with students could benefit from the techniques that she worked with, with them on, so de-escalation, prevention, just giving them more tools. We also reached out to our transportation directors, and we worked in tandem with our transportation department here at KSDE to present a curriculum called "In the Driver's Seat." And every single district in Kansas received a copy of this curriculum at the beginning of last school year. And this was used to train bus drivers to, again, give that group a set of tools that they could use, de-escalation, prevention, so that they did not have to use seclusion or restraint with students. So that was another group we reached out to. You'll also see scattered through here is technical assistance to specific schools. So when we get requests from a specific building asking for some help, we will go out there, we will take our service providers and see what we can do to help them. We also prevented, presented at conferences like the KSDE conference, the KASB conference. Dr. Randy Sprick followed up with the participants from CHAMPs in two different webinars, you know, toward the end of the school year. And then our efforts turned to focus on de-escalation, and we began rolling out de-escalation presentations regionally across the state that you can see here. And here is a map showing all the places that our service providers have been this school year. Something that we didn't have on there, where we're, where we're going next, is what we're calling ESI Part III, and it is a webinar that will give districts a spreadsheet that they can use to record ESI information about their students, and then they can use that to make data-driven decisions.
And also this fall and into, into the winter, we are doing a CHAMPs TOT, Training a Trainer. So we will have regional providers able to go out and deliver the CHAMPs training method across Kansas. So we took applications for that and got a lot of interest back on that. That is all I have for our ESI update for today. And again, I apologize, you know, we have not had an opportunity yet to sit down with the data. Again, as that fourth quarter closed on us, June 30th, but we will have that shortly in the near future to be able to sit down and talk about what we've learned this year in terms of data reporting and how we see that driving our technical assistance going into this coming school year. Are there any questions?
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. Want to thank you. On one of your slides, you said that there were 17 public schools that did not report, non-reporting. Can you, I would be interested in knowing who, where those districts, those were. Can you provide that to us?
We would be able to provide that. Of note here, they were not public schools that did not report for quarters in a row. They may have been one quarter or two quarters reporting. They are not any buildings that did not report for three quarters. So they may, may or may not be the same public schools pointed out in quarter two or quarter three.
So you think they got the message? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much. This is important information, and we appreciate you staying past the lunch hour to present to us.
Thank you.
And at this point, our meeting will recess until 1:30.